This is our last meeting of the year. As a result, the last meeting of my presidency and the last time I have to go chase down Commissioner Davis to remind him that we have a 9:00 meeting. I'm very excited about it.
I think you've done a wonderful job this year, sir.
All right, we are, I'm sure we'll have time during our meeting today to express our gratitude to everybody for the wonderful year that we've had at Mission, a year of great transition and great things going on. I am personally really grateful for these two, for the grace that they've given me to be the president this year. We have had a really strong year, all the way across the board, every way you could measure it. We're doing great things here and we're really proud of it, excited about it, and excited for the future. So to our staff, say thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you for all the incredible work that you've done. To our fellow elected officials, one of whom is in the room, thank you to all of our fellow elected officials for the great work that they do. To all the boards, some folks are here today from boards. You know, the volunteer work that our board members do is irreplaceable and much appreciated. So, great year coming to a close and looking forward to another great year next year. With that, we will start our meeting and the first thing we have is the interview with Thomas Brennan to possibly be appointed to our airport position. Mr. Brennan, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. We're a little less formal, but you look very nice in your suit today. I know, you show up for an interview, you gotta show up in a suit, right?
That's right.
That's good. So, thank you for your willingness to serve. I just mentioned how much we appreciate our boards and the airport board is very important to us. We feel like we've got some great opportunities with the airport board. Tell us about yourself. You and I have known each other for 22 years now, I believe.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, if you would step up to the podium so everybody could hear you. But tell my counterparts about yourself and why you have an interest in being a part of the airport.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fix, Mr. Levinsey, Mr. Davis. Good morning, good morning to all. I have a desire to give back. I have been part of the Central Committee and Executive Committee for a long time now and I'd like to contribute more to the county. I'd like to see the county develop to its fullest potential. I started in aviation in 1985, which means I'm old. So, I started by with a 135 carrier. For those who don't know what 135 carrier is, it's a carrier for hire that operates aircraft. And I did a little bit of everything in aviation for that provider, from fueling aircraft to running operations to sales. So, I have an acumen for aviation and I have an acumen for business. So, together I think that would be a winning combination to help counties' airport development. Over the past, since '85, I've developed a couple of life sciences businesses within companies that have become very successful, one at $32 million, one at $42 million. So, I have a lot of business contacts, both aviation and across the country. So...
So, for those who don't know, could you talk about what life sciences means?
Okay, so life sciences is probably a little bit different to everyone. So, what I've worked on for many years is the transportation of life, enhancing, like saving materials such as organs for transplant, cadaveric tissue for research and for implantation. And my focus for the last 10 years has probably been, what I focus on most is radioactive medicine. So, you know, there's a, many don't know, there's a supply chain for radioactive isotopes are used for both scanning and now diagnostics, diagnostics and therapy. And so those are manufactured all over the world. So, you're responsible for transportation by air of radioactive isotopes from all over the world into the United States for scans you may have had or therapies you may have. Right now, I'm working on a project, I have a charge coming over twice a week from Italy with prostate cancer treatments. So...
Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah.
Continue on, please.
Oh, sorry. So, I also, at the start of my career, I thought I wanted to be a pilot. So, I went through some of my ratings. I got to my instrument rating and decided that not, I don't want to sit in a cockpit for hours and hours every day. I wanted to do something out, maybe more sales, more business oriented. So, I went down a different track and that's when I started building a life science division within two different companies over the past, for some years. So, again, appreciate the opportunity, appreciate your consideration. Can I answer any other questions?
Yeah, tell us what you know about Fairford County Airport and what your vision would be.
Well, from what I know, just looking at some of the board minutes, a lot of the current activities are around maintenance. There's been some improvement. Again, I didn't dive into a ton of the minutes, but it seems like our airport is positioned very nicely as a regional airport outside of the expense and the congestion of Port Columbus. The other regional airports in the area, either in Licking County in Delaware or also in Franklin County, I don't think are positioned as we are. We have 33 that is immediately adjacent to the airport. I think with an upgrade of the airport instrumentation, landing features and possibly runway length, that we could attract more business, not only corporate, but possibly business, sell fuel, sell maintenance, be that gateway for all of the progress that's happening in the new molding area, for example.
All right, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, Tom, welcome.
Thank you.
We know each other, I don't know if it's been 20 years, but it's been a while. And as you may not know, I'm in the Board Appointment Fendry Box.
You're in the Board Appointment Fendry Box?
Yeah, last one I got really wrong. So, you know, I just wanted to welcome you because I'm in the Fendry Box.
Okay, well, thank you. I hope you get out soon.
David?
It's kind of interesting.
Yes.
We'll be talking about that video.
Yeah.
So, Tom, also welcome. And I'm very, you applied once before.
Yes.
And I think what's really good is that we have all the applicants for a lot of these board positions where, and it gives us the ability to choose the best. Last go around, that wasn't necessarily the case with you, but it was in fact, we need certain people to fill those positions with certain skills. And in this particular case, the skills you have work very nicely with the Board. Thank you. So, yeah, I appreciate your willingness. You're also willing to spend the time that's needed, I assume.
Absolutely.
So...
Yeah, I'm at the point in my career where I can mostly make my own schedule, so...
Well, that's pretty nice. Thank you. Because, you know, we have a very good makeup of our airport at this time with a lot of different skill sets. And I think you could add a new dynamic to that.
Thank you.
John Coaches, do you have any thoughts or questions?
Well, I think we were just agreeing that it's an instant upgrade from the previous.
I'll take that. I'll take that as a compliment.
Rick is leaving out, it is considered somewhat a business sense. Some of us are not, I'm a grounds person, a buildings person, but we have a few pilots. We have a great mix of general aviation, corporate aviation, and the business thesis, some of that.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I love that your, when Commissioner Fix asked you what your thoughts were on, you know, the current airport and positioning. A lot of the discussion has been on maintenance. We've got some plans and some good things for the board. It's a lot of work that's on. So, I'm excited that somebody else back in the vision will be doing the work.
So, the good news is, should we make this point, we're replacing one crazy blue jacket fan with another crazy blue jacket fan.
And Buckeye fan.
Okay. So, you know, we've talked here and after I've talked with John Coaches and others that, you know, my vision, our vision is that the Fairford County Airport become the preferred choice outside of CMH, in that we have kind of a unique, we're positioned uniquely in the market, in that some of the competing airports around central Ohio have things that make it so that they can expand as easily as we can. And so, we've put a pretty good number of resources behind the airport this year and to the future. And appreciate John Coaches' leadership over there and look forward to your significant contributions to the board.
Thank you.
Unless there's anything else, we can conclude our interview. We do have legislation to make this happen today, so...
And that would be effective.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for...
Go ahead and read that now.
Sure.
This is a resolution from 2012. A resolution approving the appointment of the Fairfield County Airport.
No, no, sorry.
Any discussion? Yeah, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levinsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Welcome to the board, Tom.
Thank you.
Now you can go lose the tie and get to work. Please.
What's the, what's the date? Is there a date that Rick's service concludes and the date that the new service begins? Does everybody already know that?
January 1st.
And it is a three-year term, which will conclude on December 31st, 2025.
So, you may, you may want to connect with John here, John Coaches, and he can...
Yeah, they're connected, you won't worry.
And Tom already knows the pay scale.
Yes.
We know the time is zero, it's still zero.
Tom, thanks, thank you again for your willingness to serve. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right, so, we have a building imaging presentation from John Coaches.
I'm gonna steer there if you want. I can present this computer there. Dan's gonna help me present. A lot of what we're gonna look at is on the screens and we're gonna set up here so we can share it to those outside. Probably about mid-year, we had looked at different ways to increase our building security inventory, also our building layout and just a couple of different things. And we were to the point where we've had, doesn't make too much sense if I'm talking something. So, we had looked out, you know, we've all seen Realtor photos and things like that, new houses, about these new tools in 3D imaging of a building to better explain what it looks like and what's inside that building. So, there is a new industry looking at using this as a tool for building maintenance, building security, and just basically knowing more about your space and being microplugged. So, as Garrett's gonna steer around here and not give us notion sickness, trying to, that's the only probably disadvantage there. What we did was start with the county courthouse and a project to 3D map the entire building. And that mapping is both a picture, as you're seeing now, and a LiDAR, which is essentially a radio waves that sends and map out a room in a three-dimensional space. So, that gives us measurement. It gives us anomalies on different things around the walls or rooms. So, in a combination, we get to see this type of image, but what we're able to do is start identifying pieces of the building so that we can better keep maintaining them, keep a better eyesight of what they look like, where their locations are. Have we made it up to the courthouse? I was dragging it a little bit. Okay, good. So, I'm sorry, I gotta look with you too. So, what we've done here is created an imaging where we are capturing 3D space and a 2D space. So, real quick, we'll go ahead and go look at the dollhouse view of the whole entire courthouse. They call it a dollhouse view because it looks like a dollhouse and it's in 3D space. So, you can actually zoom in to different parts of the building individually. You can look. And everywhere you see a dot is something that we identify with the vendor as a critical piece of infrastructure for this building. So, we are able to adapt that and add to that. We're able to retake pictures when new construction happens and we're able to create this 3D view of the courthouse. Internally, it's great for us, but it also has an external component where we're able to do this in a public setting, put this on the internet, and you're able to tour this historical courthouse. I'm excited to get started with that as we are gonna have a number of different historical photographs that Dennis has been able to create. So, when you walk into this courtroom, you can actually see what it looked like in 1902. And you can kind of get that historical tour of the building. I say tour, weird, I know. So, Garrett, if you go back to the courthouse, this courtroom. As you go through the building, you're able to measure distances, which helps us in maintaining and keeping the buildings up to date. So, you can take any measurement to the 16th of an inch anywhere in the building that we've done. You can... You can share any space with someone. And it's physically that exact space with a hyperlink. So, then I send you that, you can click on it, and you're gonna see exactly what I see in that web-based application. We are going to print our 2D fire tornado emergency exit maps based on this, and it's accurate, that we can keep that up to date over time after time. Dennis has probably had to put those together with different Excel, you know, sticks and things like that. It's been very, very battery because we don't have a CAD system. This allows us to do some of that functionality. If you're so inclined, and maybe we will be in the future, you can actually use this in virtual reality. So, where you can put a virtual reality headset on and go throughout the building in that space, which would make me quite conscious.
That would have been a great demo, John.
It's a scene right up here.
Walking through. It might not surprise you that the first place my mind went was with the potential metadata that we could throw in here. It's that information, it's those points along the way that we can make note of and have. So, for example, when they went through, they did this kind of on their own, they identified wireless access points in the building. So, now we have a record of where those are physically located in the building, and that will help us with coverage needs and that sort of thing. So, you know, I think what they also included were things like fire extinguishers. So, keeping track of that, having that information contained in a system is quite helpful. As you mentioned, you know, when things change, it's not like we have to redo an entire building. Take, for example, you know, this hallway looks wildly different today as it did, you know, a year and a half ago. All they would have had to do is, you know, take a number of points within that space and then they can kind of blend that into what all the other work in the entire building was done. So, when changes occur, it's not that, it's not that big of a deal to add those into, you know, the existing environment.
And I think what's exciting too, that we, I haven't mentioned yet, the company we were working with, this is a local company, they're here based in Lawrence. They do a lot of document imaging, a lot of other projects that are in this space. So, having those updates so quickly and easily done will really help us create a way to keep all of our buildings pretty up to date as far as knowing about them. Just, we were wanting to keep it short, just kind of another fun tool that we have here that we're able to expand on and test and see how far it goes.
So, is it the intention to do this for all the county buildings?
I mean, that's what we're evaluating now. We focus on this building because it's a sort of value than that other things, but, but yeah, it would be great. We identify a lot of these structures in Dan's databases and facilities databases, but there's nowhere to visually see that. They're just, they're just numbers on an Excel spreadsheet or an FMX. So, ideally, yes, I think it's shown to be pretty useful, but at the same time, we want to evaluate that cost effect instead of doing it in so many buildings.
I would say start with the buildings that we have absolutely no drawing on. Many of our buildings that have either been renovated or built in the last 10 years, we do have plans, you know, we keep those. But such as this building, there's no actual building drawings, you know, just sketches. So, and we have quite a few other buildings or a few other buildings that all under that category. So, I would definitely start with those.
And if you could tell me the primary benefit this is?
I think it's inventorying our critical infrastructure of the buildings and being able to identify them in a visual way.
I can see we're a maintenance aspect, but we need...
Yeah, we've already, you know, thermostats, the units that condition our space, IT infrastructure, cameras, and that's all our private sense. We don't, we don't share that on the outside. We'll have a public version where you can just simply look at the building and things like that. And if you want to go to Oni's office, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, you're working diligently at desk, but what's important is where some people may question.
It's, it's very exploratory, the conversations that we've had with the company that provided this to us, you know, have been a lot of what ifs or could it be. I think, you know, there's potential for training, new staff, you know, and awareness of where things are in a building would be very helpful for the staff that we've had start. And so, at some point in time, that could be part of, you know, some of the new staff training.
No. Well, we can't, here the thing that I want to point out with this is we're able to blur, you know, people and documents that may be sitting on desk. So, we'll do an extensive scrub of the building to make sure it's, everyone's privacy is still maintained. It's not the goal, but you're seeing that first draft of our product and... No, we'll scrub you out. And it's a busy desk and, you know, we want to be able to make sure that people have that privacy while we're with us.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm curious, you may have already mentioned this, but is there an external view as well or just internal?
There will be an external view when we're done. We're just in that internal draft view, right?
I think he means of the building itself.
Oh, of the outside? Yes, we will have an outside scan via drone of the building. We were kind of waiting as far, waiting for the project to finish up on the exterior before that.
And I guess my question is then is, is this, would that, would that be all together then? Or would you have like, here's our external views, here's our internal views? Or we're like, if you go to this building, you can start from the outside, see what's going on, and then come in?
Yes, that's correct. The dollhouse view will start with the exteriors, be able to walk kind of around the building in the exterior ground. So, that is more helpful when the tree leaves are off and then we have construction going on. So, we, we wanted the pictures to look really good because those will be a little bit more difficult to reproduce and update because being a drone versus camera on a tripod. And just for fun sake, there's a stackable layer of floors. And if you chop up every mezzanine, it ends up in 11 separate floors in space. So, we're gonna relabel that and be more specific. But this building is very complex with our mezzanine structure. So, we'll be making this available as soon as we get some of that data scrubbed for others to look at, play with, and see what, what things may come from.
Commissioner Levinsey?
No, I think it's perfect, very forward thinking.
Yeah, it's cool.
Fun, nice work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chance. All right, next on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone who would like to address a commission this morning? You have a busy schedule today, so we'll be holding to our three-minute timeline. Good morning, Ray.
Good morning. My time this morning will be short, but I did want to mention, one of the things that with all that's happening this weekend around the country, there's a lot of effort being made to take our guns away, any way it can. And just recently, the Supreme Court proved, and they said, we have a right for our weapons and it will not change. And so, with this in mind, again this morning, I want to pray, Lord, be with the people in this room as we come before you this morning. We thank you and praise you for the information that was given by John and seeing something a few years back, we wouldn't have thought of it. But, Lord, there's so much happening. Some of it can be used for good, but a lot of it's being used for bad. And help us, Lord, to look at all the information that's available, consider all things. And we want to give you the credit, Lord, for enabling people in this time to use things for good. And we pray, Lord, that you guide and direct those in making these decisions, help them to follow through and be the person that you want them to be. And we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen. And Judy's gonna give something different this morning. I think the board will appreciate that. So, I have something to add.
Well, it is different, but I don't know that it's the greatest subject. The following statements have been proclaimed or reported and certainly bring a lot of light on things that are happening in America. And most of these items are very disturbing, to say the least. We, the citizens of Fairfield County, have to ask just what is the chief government of our county doing to solve, rectify, and change for the good in order to protect citizens of this county? Or what are they not doing? There is evil in this world. There's darkness in this world. There are those in power who wish to control and enslave us in order to keep us sedated, keep us unaware, and keep us blind. Human trafficking cases were heard in 2021 and they were down, they stated, 22%. Now, we have 97 different US attorneys, but there were only found to be 140 trafficking cases that were heard. There should be thousands and thousands of cases, but there aren't. The Justice Department is supposed to be protecting American citizens. Under Trump, we paid cartels. Under Trump, we paid cartels $500 million in four years. Under Biden, we have paid cartels $13 billion in less than two years. It's big business, bigger than drugs, because drugs sell once. Children and women and boys sell many times. And all these statements that I'm giving to you come from Liz Yor and also from Project Veritas. And Project Veritas has pointed this out, and you and I know that they are, that they make certain of what they put out, that it is factual before they do. Also Liz Yor, who is head of the International Child Advocate Attorney, has much info. And here are just three of her posts on that website of hers. One is, are US bishops complicit in the trafficking and exploitation of migrant children? Two is blame Catholic charities and NGOs for the border crisis. And number three, politicians hide behind Catholic charities to welcome illegals. She also said that you can starve people to death, you can inject people to death, and you can freeze people to death. Just go to her website if you want facts, figures and truth. Are we to believe that this county is not having any of this evil problem? We are so close to Columbus and we know that we are on the drug highway to Athens and vice versa. And we have heard and known the exploiting of human life. We need hearings. And do remember, we are the majority, not the mentally disabled. Truth and facts we stand on and believe and we present. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the commission this morning?
Good morning, my name is Steve Feeney. My address is on the sign and sheet. I am here today to once again voice my opposition to utility solar plants in Ohio. During last Tuesday's commissioners meeting during the county administration update, an agenda item referenced the South Central Power proposed Royalton substation. Solar related almost certainly. Later in the regular meeting that day, Commissioner Davis, you had some questions for the county engineer regarding a resolution on the potential four-way stop at the intersection of Pickerton Road and Lythopolis Road. Your valid concern that the public been properly made aware of this new traffic pattern that would emerge? I wondered, have we made the public aware of the higher prices Ohioans will be paying for electricity as a result of increasing solar adoption? How do Ohioans benefit, benefit from this solar buildout on Fairfield County land? 20 years ago, 20 years ago, we generated more electrical power in Ohio than we do now. Why all this new electrical infrastructure? Solar, that's why. One of the many hidden solar costs. Driving home from here, I take Fair Avenue to Wilson Road, heading west. Off to the left, I found the AEP Sipford Substation, brand spanking new. It's only there because of the solar buildout, just like the new Royalton Substation will be when built. Carbon dioxide is not the demon it is made out to be. It is essential for life on Earth. And solar plants in Fairfield County won't stop the sun from shining. Whether warming or cooling Earth, the sun will decide, not man. My question is, do you Ohioans believe, we, do you believe Ohioans would agree to higher electricity prices for solar adoption? Why don't we find out? Commissioners, I have a proposal. Why don't we have a special county election, yes or no, on the solar plants? Voting used to be the way things were done in America. When the government was about to ask the people to spend more of their hard earned money on something new that many may feel is unnecessary. Do the majority of the people support these solar plants? Why don't we find out with a vote? I'd like to wish you all a blessed advent as we await and anticipate the arrival of Emmanuel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else? Morning, Mr. Taylor.
Hello. I just wanted to share some quick little stats of end of year things from us because I think it's important to share some of the really good things that are going on. Um, this is going to encompass all of the counties that we covered, but that includes Fairfield County. I feel like breaking it down to exact, but I'll share a couple that do affect us total. So across our four partnerships that we have with career centers, across our footprint, that affected and allowed 300 plus students to be involved in building homes for us this year. Among that, six homes were built and sold to homeowners across our footprint. Two of those were ready here in Fairfield County, so that's pretty awesome. We have three restores and of those three restores, 825 tons of waste, well, what would be considered waste, was diverted from the landfills through those restores, which is pretty big. 62 families across our footprint were taken care of in different manners, whether that's with the home builds, the microfinance loan, critical home repairs. And that doesn't include the multitude of families that might have been impacted through other programs that we have in place, like our critical, our community renovations and repairs that redid the bathroom, the women's bathroom at the Y. If you're ever in there, the locker room, our social enterprise did take care of that. So that was an upgrade for them. That probably affected quite a few people. We also had multiple project playhouse events. One right here in Fairfield County in the fall at the workforce center. Nine of those, 39 playhouses that went out across our footprint came right here in Fairfield County. Two of those are at the Aha Museum, check them out if you're over there. Maywood Mission, several of our other, the Lighthouse Organizations and families here in Fairfield County. And across our footprint, 142,000 in property taxes were paid. So I don't have the specifics on that, but here for Fairfield County, but it's a, a great number. And we have a lot to look forward to in 2023 and I cannot wait to see the impact that we make here. So, thank you.
And congratulations on President elect.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that'd like to welcome back? Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission this morning? Thank you all for your comments. We have a legal update this morning.
Other than just galloping into the end of the year.
Galloping, I like that, that's a great word.
And huge thank you to Amy and Stephen for getting everything on the agenda today. I think Toby can make y'all some quick.
Thank you all for all your work. All right, Oni, it's your show.
Okay, ARP update from the 30.6 received. 19.6 has been appropriated, 9.9 extended and 5.2 encumbered or obligated. We did have a number of county employees who rang the bell for the Salvation Army's Red Kettle Campaign this past weekend. Myself, CJ Roberts from Juvenile Court, Abby Watson, Bennett Nicewonger, Jeff Porter, Lori Har, Hawk and Commander Dennis Low all volunteered. So there's CJ and her festive gear, Abby and her mini me's. Me with my daughter and daughter-in-law. And there's Jeff and Lori and we, Bennett and his father. And we miss Commander Low, we didn't get a picture of him. He, he finished it up and passed off the kettle to those. And Jeff and Lori said that their shift, it was full. So, and my team, they were very enthusiastic with bell ringing and were dancing the entire time. So, a fun time. So on December 9th, Fairfield County celebrated its 222nd birthday. Originally founded in 1800, we are a pre-statehood county, only one of nine. And we were originally much larger. And if you guys all recall, when we played the county birthday game at the roundtable, the nearby counties of Hocking, Knox, Licking, Pickaway and Perry used to be either entirely or partially part of Fairfield County. So just a little interesting tidbit there. We do have the holiday open house today from 11 to 1:00. Invite employees to join us there for that. Highlights of resolutions, review packet contains a list of administrative approvals. And we do have 47 resolutions for the voting meeting today, which is very typical for the last meeting of the year. We do have a resolution approving reappointments of Mr. Matt Poston and Mr. Brian Long to the Fairfield County Revolving Loan Fund, as well as reappointments of Chief Deputy Scott Urban and Sergeant TJ Strawn to the Volunteer Peace Officers Dependence Fund Board. And we are amending Resolution 2020 10.22.D. Where James, via his position, was appointed to the Visitors and Convention Bureau Board. But we did notice there was a little typo in that, James, and you were appointed for a three-year term, but it had that term ending as an end date one year sooner than it should. So we're just amending that. We also have a resolution to approve reimbursement rates for appointed counsel. We had been working on this for a number of months and that will take effect January of 2023 to adjust that rate to $65.
Just a footnote on that, Mr. President. Please. So that resolution is the culmination of many months of discussions with the judiciary. In certain cases, certain members of the bar, and then also a number of discussions with the Public Defender's Office for the state of Ohio. So there are some, some compromises in the resolution by and between the judiciary, for example. And I think probably one of the more significant aspects of the resolution is that while the hourly rate is increasing, the caps are, for common police court are remaining the same. And since a number of the cases before the court do what they call cap out, or I call it that, the change in the hourly rate wouldn't result in a change in the compensation under the case caps. So predicting fiscal implication of the resolution is a little difficult. But I wouldn't expect it to be significant. A much more significant to this expense will be behavior of the state in the coming biennial budget. And then the behavior of the Public Defender's Office in promoting different delivery structures potentially and dramatically affect the county. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this particular resolution. So this is an ongoing issue at the State House. CCO is significantly involved in that. But, so here on a local level, I just wanted to thank you for all the time and effort you've put into working with the judges and the bar and others to come to this compromise. So I truly appreciate the effort. Yeah, and I've offered, Mr. President, to address our association as a whole or any subcommittee thereof that would be deemed appropriate. And I've advised right now that they'd rather not have me. Okay.
All right, moving on, there is also a, two resolutions on due to fund of fund transfers for the FOJ fund for both the county prosecutor and the sheriff. A resolution approving grant awards for older adult services levy. So Meals on Wheels is administering those grants and totaling $170,000. We also have on a resolution to create a four-way stop at the intersection of Lythopolis Road and Pickerton Road.
Mr. President, if I might. Yes, please. So a couple of points. One, someone close to me last week suggested that if anything bad happened at that intersection between last Tuesday and today, that it would be my fault because I delayed the resolution. Interesting point of view, but I think might be helpful for people to know that the stop sign will go up as previously scheduled today. So there was no delay in the installation of this four-way stop as a result of my, or I'll say our wanting a little more time and information about it. Beyond that, I did talk to some residents in the area, very favorable about this change. Also learned something that I may have known at one time and then not recalled. But if you go just a little further north on that same road to Amanda Northern, which is also a four-way stop. When that four-way stop first came in, a person who was not familiar with the change blew through that four-way stop and killed, killed a lady there at Amanda Northern Road. And hearing of that, it caused me to have some discussions with county engineer regarding the change that will occur today. And just saying anything, everything you can possibly do to alert, to continue to alert people to that change would be appreciated. I threw out flashing lights, not permanent flashing lights, but flash something, put something big out there. I don't, I don't, I'm not an engineer, but do something dramatic, I, was what I said. Alert people to that change in hopes that someone who be unaware of that change wouldn't make the same kind of mistake. It was maybe the result in some dying at the intersection immediately north. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your desire to show patience last week, even though I didn't agree with it at the time. One week and we're still putting it at the same time seems to make sense. Though I do see that we're not overrun with people who have an interest in speaking on that topic. So the most effective stop signs in my part of the county up in the northwest corner are those that have the flashing lights on the stop sign, letting people know from way far back there is a stop sign there. So perhaps our county engineer Jeremiah Upkin do something down that road. We'd appreciate anything you all could do.
We have installed numerous signs that just note the traffic pattern change for drivers. So that's been up since 12:02. And then we'll leave those signs up for an extended amount of time. And usually the sheriff's department assists us with just helping regulate traffic through that area when that first gets started, that's pretty common. So we did that at Carroll Northern and Pleasantville Road. That was the last four-way stop that they set up and we did that with too. So just kind of trying to slow traffic down through that new intersection.
Appreciate it. Mr. President, this, also I wanted to mention, I think at the last meeting, I may have left people with the impression that, that at that meeting was the first I was hearing of the proposed change. If I did leave people with that impression, that was not accurate. I had been previously briefed on that prospective change by staff. And frankly, I've forgotten the briefing. And then when the resolution came, I thought it was all coming pretty quick. And so I hit the pause button. But to the extent I left people with the impression that staff had not briefed me properly, that was in error. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Oni?
Continuing on here. We also have two change orders, one for the Fairfield Center project and then for the SWAT garage. And then lastly, approval of a contract fight in between probate court and Adam H. Board for guardianship services. Art, any budget review?
Just getting ready for the end of the year.
Recognition, county auditor Dr. Brown thanked the REA team for the additional outreach regarding BOR rules and guidance. County auditor Dr. Brown thanked Robin Christian for helping with mailers. And thanks to Stacy Nysley for the suggestion and allowing her to help. County auditor Dr. Brown thanked Jackie Tripp for attending the county auditor's all team meeting. She has provided terrific assistance. County auditor Dr. Brown thanked the county auditor's team for being so positive and supportive of Ohio counties such as Seneca, Athens, Pickaway and other counties. Thanks also for being supportive of neighboring law enforcement offices seeking certification of scales. And lastly, county auditor Dr. Brown stated that our office is focusing on community engagement during the holidays and thanks to Stacy Knight for her leadership and participation with FMC TWIG 1. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Under calendar review, we have Commissioner Levesey with the RLF Loan Review Committee meeting today at 2:00 PM at the Record Center. Job Family Services All Staff Meeting is December 15th at 8:00 AM in One Job Family Services All Staff Meeting is December fifteenth at 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM. Commissioners Fix and Levesey will be at the 8:00 AM meeting, and Commissioners Davis and Levesey at the 1:00 PM meeting, and that will be held at the Liberty Center. The Transportation Improvement District Meeting is December fifteenth at the Fairfield County Engineers' Office, that is 9:00 AM, with Commissioners Fix and Levesey. Love's Travel Stops Ribbon Cutting is December fifteenth at 4:00 PM, and that is at thirty-seven ninety-nine Lancaster Circleville Road Southwest, and all three commissioners will be in attendance. The Fairfield County Economic Update is December sixteenth at 8:30 AM at the Fairfield County Workforce Center. Family Adult and Children First Council Executive Committee Meeting is December sixteenth at 8:30 AM at the Fairfield County Agricultural Center. Commissioner Levesey will be at that. Commissioners Fix and Levesey will be at the MCU Annual Chili Cook-Off on December sixteenth at 11:00 AM. Commissioner Levesey will be at the South Licking Water Conservancy District Annual Meeting with the Conservancy Corps on December sixteenth, and that's at the Licking County Courthouse. For invitations received, the County Commissioners Association of Ohio implementing drainage and road use maintenance agreements for renewable energy projects webinar is on December fourteenth at nine thirty AM. And the AG Yost twenty twenty-three Human Trafficking Summit is January twenty-sixth at the Greater Columbus Convention Center.
And for the road use maintenance agreements webinar that the County Commissioners Association is putting on, I'll be attending that, as well as folks from the engineers' office, and Tony and anybody else over here if you can remember, but we will be joining in on that webinar.
All right. For correspondence received, a press release from the Board of Commissioners on December sixth, Fairfield County Board of Commissioners approves the twenty twenty-three budget. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette on December ninth with author Jeff Barron. Fairfield County Commissioners passed fifty-nine-point-six million twenty twenty-three general fund budget. Press release from the Office of the County Auditor on December seventh, Fairfield County Auditor's Office completes National Association of Counties High Performance Leadership Academy. Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control Notice of Class C and D Permit Right to Request a Hearing. Fairfield County Municipal Court Criminal Traffic Division Fees Collected Report for November. Board of Revision New Legislation and Planning Letter Administrative Meeting Public Notice and Flyer Regarding Procedures. And the Family Adult and Children First Council Information Regarding Fathering First. That is it.
Thanks, Rochelle. Jail population last week was two sixty-seven, with thirty-two of those being contracted placements. Today, the sheriff reports two forty-nine, with sixteen of those being contracted placements. And he does share that this is a typical drop that is seen nearing the holiday season. Sheriff also shared that Galia County is nearing completion of their new jail, and with this, their contract for housing prisoners here in our county will not be continued. And Galia County has averaged ten to thirteen contracted placements. Sometimes it's gone as high as twenty, but really staying around the ten to thirteen area, the sheriff has reported. He's also evaluating contracts with other counties that would allow for additional contracted placements. That's all I have.
Okay. Old business, Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, I think, as my colleagues know, Andy Cordell and I had the chance to meet with ODOT recently regarding transit questions and concerns. During that meeting, it became apparent that we're probably some months away from an opportunity to get grant funding for a transit development study in twenty twenty-three. Chuck Dyer with ODOT suggested that we might reach out to ODOT's favored consultant on that kind of issue, RLS, which I did this past week, and had a lengthy conversation with their representative Laura Brown, and in that conversation requested a template or proposal, if you will, to do a transit development study with also a component of that that would involve kind of a paint-by-numbers approach to moving Lancaster Fairfield Transit from the city of Lancaster to Fairfield County, just so that we might see what that looks like and how one might go about that. In conjunction with that, and the request to RLS was to kind of give us a template of what they could do, say, for example, at forty-nine-nine. Also had good conversations with Mayor Scheffler and Don McDaniel, Representative City Council, regarding the possibility of a study like that and the content. And there was only support for doing that. So clearly, as one member of the commission, I could not make any deals, so to speak, with RLS, and I did not. But I did definitely want to see what the components of the transit development and transit transition component would look like, just kind of to shed light on our thoughts and decision-making as we go forward.
Okay. Any other old business from you?
No.
Commissioner Levesey?
So last Wednesday, we, Thirty-three Alliance, had an annual meeting at Blue Label, attended with Rick Zarek and Andy Cordell. You know, but what a great place. I mean, they gave us a tour of the facility, and as they were producing digitally producing labels, I mean, that's high-end technology. I mean, it's pretty amazing, so I was very impressed. I was impressed by the folks at the company, the forward-looking attitude, if you will.
All right. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the County Commissioner Association, County Engineer Association Joint Winner Conference. Bonnie was there, Jeff Porter was there, Rick Zarek was there. I think all four of us, Tony was there, all four of us presented, or five, I don't know. I know Rick had a presentation, I only had one, I had one. And Jeff did. So, you know, we had a great representation there. It was well-attended and well-put-together, and I was reminded of the importance of county government in how we impact our state legislature and our state leadership. The governor attended, you know, many of his cabinet officers were there, and state representatives as well. CCO does good work, and I'm pleased to be on the board, and I'm glad that we're, we have a significant voice there. All right. Is there any other old business? Yes, Dr. Brown.
At the last week of December, we're going to be doing an expedited payroll processing. Folks are aware of this process, if you're engaged with payroll. Just wanted to say thanks to everybody for their extra effort and evening work to do that in order to stay on track, and we'll be sure to alert folks to any issues that we see within a departmental payroll process as well. Also conducted a presentation for the Jeopardy, the tenth Jeopardy session, with Sermon Rotary, and it was very well-received, and there's some really good learning opportunities with the Jeopardy games. We now have ten different versions of it, and it's part of our speakers of year of twenty twenty-three.
If ever you decide to do a tournament of champions, I'm happy to.
Okay. We've got some other ideas for twenty twenty-three, and I think you'll like it.
All right. Is there any other old business? All right, new business, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I don't know when during the course of this meeting or the next would be appropriate to just share from my vantage point, Mr. President. As you know, I think I've been president six of the last twelve years or so, and so a lot of experience being in your role that you've served in this year. And I really do think that you did an extraordinary job this year. I think your outreach was very well-received. Those kind of outlying meetings, if you will, were better attended than I anticipated they would be. So a really good idea there. And I think also, and just kind of generally across the board, pressing folks for their level best and your encouragement for people to reach on issues. I think your contribution to the continuum from the training for the job to the job, to the house, to the transportation, to get to the job, you know, that continuum of development has been very significant and made a dramatic and lasting impact on the conduct of the commission. So I could go on for a little while longer, not really that much, but in all sincerity, I did want to express my appreciation and value in the service that you provided in that role this year.
I appreciate your kind words. Commissioner Levesey, any new business?
I'd like to add to what Commissioner Davis was talking about, but I'll go on and on and on. We'll cut it short. What a great job you've done. And, you know, again, I think it's about bringing new ideas to the table. You know, sometimes we get kind of set in our ways, and we do things a particular way. Sometimes it's good to look at new, better ways of doing things, you know? I think you brought some of that to the table, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know how to follow that, other than to say again, thank you to my colleagues for providing me with this opportunity and giving me some space to try some new things and to step out on a limb now and again. Also, to make our work together as fun as I think it can be. You know, this is serious work, and we have serious responsibilities, and we take all that seriously, and yet we find a way to do it in a way that makes it not a drudgery, right? And so, you know, when I talk to other commissioners around the state, they don't have these kind of relationships, not only between the commissioners, but with all the elected officials and the staff. I never hear a story like what we have here, and so I remain grateful for the opportunity to serve. I'm grateful to have a new opportunity in another four years. And I, every time, you know, I get to come down here and do the work with these commissioners, it's a great day. And that means seven days a week are great days, because being a commissioner is, as Commissioner Davis said five years ago, it's not a part-time thing, it's not a full-time thing, it's an all-the-time thing. That's proven to be true, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. Enough of that. Any other new business? Yes, Dr. Brown?
The Board of Revision Reorganization Meeting is January ninth at 11:00 AM at 108 North High. We see the agenda about that, it's just not quite ready yet. We're still putting some finishing touches on some education and outreach materials that we want to share with folks.
All right. Any other new business? None. We will go to our voting pattern.
If you'd like, if you're able, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, to the United States of America, and to your republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Clear announcements?
Clear announcement.
Now, I'll look for a motion for the approved minutes of the December sixth meeting.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Minutes for December sixth pass three-zero. From the Commissioners, we have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot A, a resolution approving the reappointments of Mr. Matt Poston and Mr. Brian Long to Fairfield County Revolving Loan Fund.
Move, Commissioners, Resolutions A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, N, L.
Second.
Discussion?
Excited to have Brian doing his service, asking you a great job, and doing a lot of work this last year, because we have fourteen loans in about fifteen-month time.
Thank you, Rick. And so we've mentioned a couple of times already this morning how much we appreciate the work of people who volunteer for all of our boards. These are other, you know, two more examples of that. And, you know, I don't know that it can be overstated, right? Because people give their time and their talent, and they ask for nothing in return. And so it's really important that we recognize them and thank them. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed three-zero. From Fairfield County Court of Common Police, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot N, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. From the Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot N, a resolution authorizing the approval to extend the repayment date of advance of fund number twenty-eight eighty-one, EV-Charging Station Fund, Economic and Workforce Development.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah. I was curious, not this resolution specifically, Rick, but as you may know, I stopped out there for a little test, you know, that didn't go as planned, which is why we do tests. And I was curious if there was any update on that. Yeah, they finally got back to us and said they're on their third replacement part, and keep getting replacements. It's the same western girl that the vendor that was chosen, the response time, and I actually had to reach out to their CEO via LinkedIn to deal with this.
Awesome. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, now there is. Going forward, is there a dependent on that vendor now forever? There's no mechanism or means by which someone else could take over the operation, so to speak?
I mean, we could replace all that equipment.
No, I'm not talking about that.
And that's right.
Yeah. There might be. I'm not sure if it's right or right.
Well, and as I've offered in other situations, if you think it would be helpful to have somebody who's very rude and aggressive in meetings like that.
Steve Davis is your guy.
I'd be happy to, you know, be your huckleberry.
I love it when he says that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
He said yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot O, a resolution to create a four-way stop at the intersection of Lythopolish Road, County Road Thirty-nine, and Pickerington Road, County Road Twenty.
Move, Commissioners, Resolutions OPQRSTNU. Second.
Discussion?
If I might, Mr. President, please. So just, I know we touched on this in review, but I want to touch on it again for the delay patient. I wanted to thank everybody for their patience on that issue, and I also wanted to thank the Engineers' Office for their patience with me, and then also the provision of information regarding this change. You know, I don't want to make too much out of a stop sign deal, I guess now it's kind of too late already, but this is a big deal to a lot of the travel involved on that road. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed three-zero. From Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot V, a resolution for approval of change order number two to the contract between the Walsh Construction Group, LLC, and the Fairfield County Commissioners.
Move, Facilities, Resolutions B and W. Second.
Discussion?
Couple of cleanup change orders to try to get these projects going, contracting some maps right now. The SWAT building is going to be very occupied on Christmas. We're having to extend out a little bit.
Is it done?
Please.
So when SWAT occupies the new building, it's seeing the month to month, the whole building is.
Yes. Jared Collins will take care of that, but he's been handling that directly out of their department. They almost terrified.
No reason, no reason to keep it if we go on a new one. Nope.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero. From Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council. Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot X. Approval of an amendment to a subaward to the Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council from the Research Institute at Nationwide Children's Hospital for State Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-three.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Nationwide Children's Hospital basically is creating three different purchase orders for the amount that they awarded us earlier this year. So that's what this resolution.
Thank you, Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot Y. A resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund Number twenty-fifteen.
I move JFS Resolutions Y, Z, double A, B, B, C, D, E, F, F, G, G, H, H, I, I, J, J, K, K, L, L, M, M, and then N, O, O. Second.
Discussion?
Josh, you've been very busy.
Yes, we appreciate the support of the commission throughout the course of twenty-twenty-two. Most of these resolutions are just regarding year-end related items, making sure we have enough appropriations in place to get us through the end of the year.
Appreciate all your work. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot PP. A resolution authorizing the approval of a contract by and between Fairfield County Probate Court and the Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board of Fairfield County.
Move Juvenile Probate Court Resolutions PP and QQ. Second.
Any discussion?
Just curious, anybody want to take a stab at the origin of the phrase mind your Ps and Qs?
Oh, boy.
In the air, anybody? Anybody? Mind your Ps and Qs. Where's it, where are we coming from here? Was this something with the typewriter and hit the wrong keys? Mind it. Never mind. Thank you, Mr. President.
That was fun. Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero. From South Central Major Crimes Unit, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot RR. A resolution to authorize the Fairfield County Commissioners to sign the Fairfield Hockey Athens Major Crimes Unit Subgrant Award Agreement.
So move. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For the Fairfield County Treasurer, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot SS. A resolution granting Fairfield County Treasurer James N. Bonson permission during twenty-twenty-three to
That's right.
To travel.
He's allowed to travel.
Yes.
Discussion? Happy trails, Jim. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot UU. A resolution authorizing the agreement between Fairfield County Commissioners and T and M Associates.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All right. Thank you, Tony. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of Bills, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twelve dot thirteen dot TT. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices from Department of City Board of Commissioners' approval.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The reorganizational meeting is scheduled for January ninth at ten AM, and the next regular meeting is scheduled for January tenth at nine AM.
All right, so this is it for two thousand twenty-two. I'll reiterate my thank you to our staff and our fellow elected officials and all the board members for all the work they've done this year. For anyone who's traveling during the holidays, safe travels. And I hope everyone here has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Is there any other business for the commission?
I'd just like to join your expression of appreciation to the Commissioner's Office and staff. It's been a, obviously, a year of transition between sandal, I think, better than I expected. So I'm very appreciative and look forward to the coming year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any?
Likewise, we're joined, thanking everybody that lead this year, a very successful year. In particular, I would wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move. Second.
All favorably signify with saying aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
And I know this is supposed to be our last meeting, but I did want to alert people to a safe date, if you will, of December twentieth. If in the event circumstances arise that require our attention, we do have that space available. And then, of course, any commissioner at any time, in all session that they do. You got plans? I'm ready to come right for anything due.
Goodbye, Merry Christmas. Thank you. Get yourself.